Okay, we are going live in five, four, three, two, one.
Welcome to the April twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two city council meeting. Hold on please.
Mayor left.
Here.
Mayor President Paul.
Here.
Councilor here.
Here.
Councilor Sullivan.
Yeah.
Council approval of the revised agenda.
We have approved all of the agenda.
Support. Section discussion. Passes, we have an agenda. Open up civic announcements in the public, which is civic announcements they like to bring up. Do you know when they close public civic announcements or open that public discussion anyway? Now you just have any public discussion anyway. Please come up.
We're gonna see your answer. Yeah.
Okay.
Here we go.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
I'm Carolyn Schump, and I reside at one-one-two-two East Granite Avenue. You know, we touched on something at the last meeting, and I thought it was important maybe to go back to it. We were talking about funding the pension debt and how we were using the marijuana tax revenues to help pay for that. So I've been going around the internet a little bit, and I wanted to find out what is our total debt obligation? The retiring healthcare and the pension fund. When I looked at it a couple of years ago, it was around a hundred and twenty million.
Probably a question better directed at Lacy and his staff who's available during regular office hours. Yeah, we could probably.
But you guys should know that.
You'll have.
That's off the top of my head.
That is something that changes, changes based on actuarial assumptions, so.
Okay, wait a minute, back up.
No, wait a minute.
I'm not looking for a specific number, I'm asking for a round number. And I'm asking the city council, who makes all the major decisions in the city, what that obligation is.
I would have.
So you're telling me you don't.
I would have to bring my budget with me to work it out. I mean, where do you work? I don't have it in me at this time.
I can bring it up again in two weeks.
I will look it up.
All righty. Second thing is, do we know what the yearly payment in cash is now being required by the state of Michigan? Something's obligation. And I think, as you mentioned something about that on the last phone call I had. It said it had gone up over a million dollars, was that?
Yeah, about a million dollars a year almost.
Is that total payment now, or that's what's gone up to?
That's the increase.
That's the increase. Why are we looking at the total payment? What are we looking at, like, about? What?
Three, three thirty.
What?
Three hundred.
Three hundred and thirty thousand a month.
Three hundred.
A month?
That's zeros and.
Right. All righty.
Three and three thirty.
Okay, I don't have my calculator there, that's all right. So, um, do we have enough money in the current budget to cover that obligation for the entire year?
You know what, this is your time test.
Yeah, I can take this in.
You did that question then.
Right, we will be having a budget session, and questions will be welcome at that point. But for public comment, it's not custom for people to come up with any other questions than question minutes.
I understand that, but I also understand that when I talk to other people in Hazel Park and talk about the amount of debt we have, they have no idea, they have no idea at all at this time. And they think I'm kidding, and I'm going, no, I'm not, it was on the books. So I find it very strange, I mean, I've had comments, I've heard comments at some of these meetings, you guys talked about it a little bit, but I don't ever hear a lot about, oh, hey, we're gonna cost over here to make this payment. We're getting more money in from this side so we can make this payment. I keep getting the feeling it's not at the top of your radar.
Yes, it isn't top of our radar, we've been watching it for a long time. Retiring healthcare system's been something we've had to deal with over time. That was not created by us, the city council, it was created prior to us, years ago. It's an obligation that we are committed to having to pay. We, at this point, with the way our finances have been over the last decade or two, has been very volatile. And we may sacrifice it to make sure that we made the minimum payments on that. And we're trying to follow through with the majority of what we owe at each point, that is criteria. Yes, we have a debt obligation, yes, we do. But as to how much that debt obligation is, we work with the state of Michigan. Our financial department works with the state of Michigan to make sure we fall within those budget guidelines. And we try to do it as best we can. Is, are we the only city with these obligation problems? No. There's other areas across the state of Michigan due to the poor funding from the state of Michigan. As Colbert here has alluded to, the municipal finances have been fundamentally broken as to how we fund and pay these obligations. So there's a bill in the House, now they're trying to help us, more as a, oh, pay a portion, not pay it all, of these obligations, the debt of retiring funds. And we're trying to make that work, along with how much we can afford to expend in different areas, in other areas that we have to take from to cover those debts. So do we have the numbers? No, we don't have the exact numbers, we're not the finance department. But on the other side, do we know what's going on? Yes, we do. And we do know how this actually went fundamentally come out in the long talk. That's why we made an obligation using marijuana funds to shore up those shortcomings as best we can. We have other items in the fire in which we go forward on in the future years that we've already set parameters with the ISBA funds to help others, to help shore up those shortcomings as well down the line.
I have thoughts about the.
We, but we have, we have already, years ago, implemented a different retiring program, which is pretty much self-funded by the retiring employee with the obligation from us. But we do not hand out those golden parachutes.
I understand that, but I'm more.
Can I answer most of your questions?
Well, we've talked about this before, so that answers some of the questions, I think what I'm looking.
Are you looking for detailed numbers?
No, I just thought I was looking for a ballpark figure. And I also wanted to hear about what plans you guys can.
That was, that's a roundabout way of.
If, if I may, I know you wanted the council to answer your questions, but we at the staff are a little more familiar with the numbers because we work with them more than that. So, uh, it's important to understand that this obligation is not totally within the control of the Hazel Park.
I understand that.
Okay, well, part of something about Michigan, the retirement.
Right, I've read about that.
Uh, probably going to murder something, it's a great deal. I feel that they can see the board for a short time, so they're, you know, what they do, they have to change their actuarial assumptions. Change in those actuarial assumptions is what they're hoping to do.
Right.
Where you can see, we're like, you know, and again, it's not exact.
And that number changes yearly.
It does.
Yeah, I understand.
But it's, you know, so you can see now, we're running between, you know, three point five and four million approximately. A year, that's a significant amount of funds, that's an increase. About a hundred million bucks a year. So, uh, there is, as the mayor said, there is legislation in place which we hope passes that will provide some relief, this is like, it's a part of these very large obligations. So what we're trying to do is convince the legislature that there really are not a lot of funding options that we have at this level. And now that they have a surplus, and a lot of that surplus is from the, you know, the money, the federal money. So, uh, we think, and thankfully, there are a great many legislators that are already shifting some relief, if you want to say. Fingers are crossed. Now, will those, would that change? And that funding brings some strength, it would bring some strength. Probably it means the actuarial assumptions, you know what I mean, when I say actuarial assumptions? Okay, those assumptions may change even a little more. Okay, we'll get some relief, but in exchange for that relief, they'll tighten it up a little bit to ensure that that is the optimal funding of our pensions.
Has the city council all put together a committee to explore other ideas to reduce these obligations?
There, that is a fairy tale. I'm sorry, I don't mean to be rude.
No, that's okay, yeah.
But, no, there's, there, trust me, we, we look at everything. We've already, uh, we're in discussions now with the state of Michigan about that. They have praised us for the changes that we've made to the pension system. Again, it's very difficult to get pension benefits that are granted pulled back because pension benefits are protected by the state constitution. So you, if you know what actuarial assumptions are, you know that then. So once these things are granted, it's difficult to pull them back. So what we've done is we've changed it on a go-forward basis. For every employee that's been hired since two thousand and six, they get a smaller multiplier, they have to work a longer number of years. The base wages are all that's allowed to be included in their final average compensation. So those things have helped us stabilize the pension system over time. In the short term, we're dealing with some, uh, you know, some obligations from some contract that were not negotiated by me, negotiated by a previous administration.
The night.
And they were going general. So obviously, those employees are now retired, and some of them retired, you know, in their forties and fifties, and it's an obligation. So hopefully, the state legislature will see fit to grant some.
Would it be helpful for a number of Hazel Park citizens to call the legislature?
It wouldn't be, I, yeah, I can give you, I can give you some list, if you want to call, I've got some people.
That would be good.
And I, you know, and I appreciate the fact, though, that you've come up here and asked these questions because it's important that we, we tell the story. But Lacy and I probably know it better than they do, they know that it's a million dollar increase, okay? So that's a big onerous payment when you got seventeen million dollar, you know, fund budget. So, uh, that's one of the reasons why marijuana was important. Now, it's created jobs, and it beautified some buildings, and that's increased our tax base as well. So there have been some other important benefits to those businesses, but the pension is important. And the one thing, I, maybe they asked about it and I missed it, but pensions are an ironclad obligation. They're like, they're like equivalent to student loans, you cannot discharge them, and if we don't pay it, there's something called a judgment levy that the courts will levy against every taxpayer to be able to buy. So it pays one way or another.
Additionally, when you stated that you weren't sure if the council was aware, I literally talk about this weekly on the court board and on other forums online. I'm telling people tax amounts, tax incomes, where the rates are, where they can be found, I'm giving links. This is always at the precipice of our information that we are aware of and that we're considering. But I would urge you to come back during our actual budget meeting, we have them every year, and nobody ever attends. So.
Okay.
For residents, it's during our regular meeting, I advertise it every year, the city advertises it. And that's a great way to get here and get your questions answered directly by the people that are actually paid to balance our budget and to make sure that we are appropriating those funds to the correct places and so that our residents are aware of what exactly we're up against.
Okay. When are the budgets coming?
Like your taxes, like anyone's home taxes or private taxes, the laws change every year. There's new criteria which we have to follow every year.
We'll, we'll be discussing the budget, the first meeting in May, and there may be a second session, a study section in between our first and second meetings in May, and we expect to have a budget at the second meeting.
Okay, so the first meeting is the city council?
First meeting will be the regular city council meeting, and we'll present the budget to the council then. So we may have a study session in between if there are additional questions and, uh, the second meeting. The second, second meeting.
Uh, the first meeting is the national, the country.
Okay, well, very hot.
I have a timer though. The, in twenty, two thousand and one, Mike and I get elected, we're sworn in, and from that time, the state of Michigan has been cutting the state shared revenue to the city municipalities every year. A few years back, we were down a total of over eight million dollars in fifteen years.
Currently under thirteen million dollars, we've lost thirteen million dollars.
A few years, the state of Michigan is number fifty, bottom of the list in investing in their communities in this country. The state legislature has always been messing with the state shared revenue because it comes in two pieces, the statutory and the constitutional. They mess with that, don't give us the money they're supposed to. And then wag their fingers at us and say, shame on you, you weren't balancing your budget.
Right.
So yes, you would be glad to have you come.
You'd give it to you.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, I got some people.
Let me give you the other part of this. From the end of April, May, if the state realizes, hey, we're short on our budget at the state level, guess where they go to? They go to the municipalities and pull the money back that they set for us, the budget for in the first place, and we have to make up that shortcut.
And we did not have what I consider to be a successful census collection at all in two thousand and twenty due to the pandemic. Now, we've got new houses coming in all over the place, and they're telling us we've lost population. That population will cost us about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year in state shared revenue because the state of Michigan doesn't look at population as a process that occurs over time. Instead, they look at it as a snapshot, they give a moment, and I don't think they took a picture, and the camera wasn't in focus, and I think they've missed a lot of people in Hazel Park. So we may end up having to do a, you know, a five-year census, and we have to pay for that. But it still may be worth it because of the reduction of revenue. I don't think it was accurate.
I think Oak Park just started their independence. I actually talked to, um, state rep, Regina Weiss, about the feasibility of Hazel Park running their own census to really accurately count and how we could go about that and what that might entail. Because I know another municipality happened, it's a huge cut in our funding, our state revenue. So it's definitely something that I've been talking to people about, bringing forward as maybe something that we can consider with it.
Well, that's what I'm really looking for, is to see what is the city council doing, working on this problem going forward? That's what I'm looking for.
We've been working on it.
I know you have.
Unfortunately, there's.
It keeps us distancing you.
It's all we think of, it's, it's what I think about and worries me more than anything.
There's very few resolutions to a problem in the state.
I understand.
That's why it's really important that the state, and when you've got Republicans and Democrats actually agreeing, a lot of them, to take a look at this, that is a really promising, my fingers are crossed, situation here because there's, there's, these are structural problems, there's very little that these small things can do.
This has been a problem for decades. The structure is, we have more retirees than employees. And in the past, some other cities like ended pensions, went into defined contribution. Well, then that stops any flow into the pension fund as well. And so now it's cap, you've got to make your obligations without any new money coming in. So, so it's a weird, it's not really a simple.
Not a big problem.
We actually looked at that, and we actually negotiated that into our contract. And then we got the bill for the pension contribution that year, and it was staggering. So what we had to do then was go back to the union and say, boy, do I have a deal for you. We're gonna keep a defined benefit pension system for our new hires. But what we're gonna do is, we're gonna stay down our multipliers, we're going to increase the number of years that you have to work to get a pension, and then we're gonna limit what you can use for your final average comp. And in doing those three things, we were able to stabilize the pension fund to some extent, doing that. But again, everyone is living longer, and that's a good thing, okay? Except when you're a pension.
Thank you, darling.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public wishing they had any comments? What calls public comments?
None. I think it's a good thing she brought that up because we get a chance to talk about that and we get a chance to explain that.
Everybody knows how much I love talking about tactics. We talk about it.
Yeah.
A lot of people don't.
You guys are not gonna be able to give that answer off the top of your head because you haven't seen the, this year's budget number.
I don't have my binder yet, man.
Yeah, so.
Give me my binder.
You know, it's, uh, and even, we can, we can give you, you know, we can ballpark it, but it changes.
All right, move on. Consent agenda, one through eight, the council.
So the consent agenda items, one through eight.
So. Questions asked, is there any discussion in items one through eight? None, any extension? None, is there anyone here from the business license of two-one-nine-one-zero-Jonar on electric key? This license is going to fail. You know, I, I know that you already hit your hammer, but I did want to ask one quick question if I could on that land gate purchase approval. No, it's going to do it. Uh, go ahead. Oh, sorry, I thought you closed on that. I thought I was gonna bring it up.
You closed, but you can't.
I, I can't get my discussion in fast enough. So the question that I have on this is, who is maintaining the basket?
The company will be. I just want the reputation.
Yeah, thank you, same question.
I already, I already have.
Any other questions, a little more time? Once, twice, okay, second time here we go. Uh, military recourse development, discussion, or two, four, five, Tuesday, November fifteenth, drive.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we have, Dwight is with us tonight. How do you say your last name, sir?
L U.
L U is here, and he's going to be giving you some, I think he's got some color, plans and conditions there that we can pass around. And he's going to be explaining a little bit about this proposal.
We, Mayor, council, thanks for the opportunity to present our proposed plan for Landmark Church. Uh, what we're proposing right now is a approximately a hundred and thirty-two unit apartment development. Market rate, the housing, that will encompass the full five acres. You're anticipating, uh, townhouse units as shown in the plan. Uh, we've got some typical elevations that are conceptual right now. We're pretty confident, and we know there are some issues with the underground sewer line, but I think we've taken, taken into account some of the issues that we have to do to mitigate that issue. As well as, uh, you know, we're, we're targeting, we're targeting rents around thirteen to seventeen hundred. One to three bedroom units, the mixture in there of various type of units and properties in the neighborhood, qualified zone. So we're actually, we've got a qualified, that's essentially invested in this, in the zone. Probably going to be looking at, uh, market rate financing. And, uh, we've got, uh, we've got an investor that's on board to invest in the tuning zone, creating our tuning zone.
Other than we townhouses? Right. County association?
No, these are rental.
No, each one.
These are rental.
All rental.
It's all to be rental and no owner occupied?
No, yes.
No, I, I believe there's a couple of that. I'd want to see at least sixty percent owner occupied in some three and four bedroom homes. A lot, if you want rentals, I would like to see them facing the side of the service truck. So it could be better kind of block some noise off the service truck as well, but you can make up your value of space there for square foot. I'd like to see more opportunities for homeownership instead of just rentals. And townhouses don't necessarily go well because one side puts a new roof on and the other corner, the other house doesn't want to put a roof on. So it causes a big problem, so you look at a condo association, that's the only way I would do something with that.
Um, I also have the issue of parking that we've designated. We've got a three-bedroom in Little Lake, parks one car, the town in Little Lake parks one car with two-bedroom in North. We're, we already have a big parking issue in this community that we've visited many times recently, we've discussed. So that, uh, gives me a lot of hesitation as well, but also the dangers of the park is definitely a big concern for me. We have a huge rental situation in this community already, and.
You have forty-seven percent.
Yeah, we, we're at one point almost at fifty percent, and I don't, I'm not comfortable pushing us back up. I want more opportunity for people to own their home, especially in a huge development like this in our city.
So, uh, all right.
Not to burst a bubble, but we want to get, we'd really like you to know our, our concept.
And what our community wants, our community wants home safety and purchase.
We have a lot of young professionals moving into this community, and some weren't looking for bigger homes because they're moving out to find a bigger home. We've had at least twenty-five homes a year built here the last four years. And, uh, they're all three bedrooms, bigger homes, and we're getting the young professional couple, starting a family here. The smaller homes that they're acquiring, families are in them, they have an extra kid or two, oh, the house is not big enough, we gotta move. Or they don't stay, they moved in other communities. We want to retain those young professionals and their families. And with this opportunity you're providing, I think you could provide that and still be able to make the, a good value for them on a space purchase.
So what percentage do you want, sixty percent?
At least.
I think he's gonna have to go back and get him, because I, I'm glad council, I'm glad council.
We can hurry.
Oh, I'm glad that you guys know what you want and.
Know where, we know what our residents.
Right, you're being.
Not what we want, it's what the residents want. You're being, what they, they had comments about, they've already been talking about this property for the last two weeks when it was brought up. And we've gotten several notifications and calls from people to let us know, we'd like to have some bigger homes and more value for the dollar we spend in our year.
And I, I may say one thing, uh, I didn't say in this, but this may change, you know, he may have to go back to the drawing board a little bit. And his investor needs to get something wrapped up by June thirtieth in order to take advantage of the federal opportunity zone. So we need to make sure that the, the numbers will work with the homeownership. And I think, you know, that's, and we did talk about that when he was in, that there was a likely good possibility that council may want, you know, a certain number or a percentage of owner occupied units.
Yeah. Can I?
No, whatever you want.
No. Okay, go ahead there.
Think I speak, I may have my colleagues, but definitely, this is, this is sorely in this development. And if they go for eventually, it's going to be a huge game for our community, so I don't want you to take that to any degree of negativity. We definitely want to see this through, but Hazel Park's actually a community that's becoming a little bit more and more rental, you know, much like the city surrounding us, and that's not a, that's not a great long-term prospect for our community. And, you know, you're alluding to like young professional couples, I consider myself in that. You know, my, my wife and I expect to make a kid, and we're already sort of testing the limits of, of the size of our home, and, you know, something like this is something that, that we would welcome, but I'm not sure they're paying mortgage, and I, and I know a lot of people probably feel the same way, but, um, you know, and I think it's mutually advantageous with the ground field as well as the alternative zone. So we'd love to have you back either at the next meeting or another meeting, just to figure out some parameters and the way that we can make it work for both that.
Okay. Do you, do you, do you think you can figure out a percentage of owner occupied units and make this work?
I don't know if I'll be ready, but when's the next, next week?
The, two weeks probably, but.
I think that we can have a special meeting.
We could maybe have a special meeting, right.
It'll accommodate you.
All right, let me, let me go back and.
And again, let's, let's talk a little bit more, I know Jeff's coming up.
No, I was just gonna say, Dwight, do me a favor, because it's kind of unclear what units have garages and what.
Right.
It's like a parking calculation, it's something that we would need.
Right, give us a parking calculation, be able to explain to the city council, you know, in, and Jeff and I were trying to figure out, is there a garage in those units or, okay, so there's one car.
There's one car in and a park behind it.
And one car out, okay.
So the first one car is underneath the unit.
Yeah.
First one car is underneath the unit, and then most of them have a driveway behind it for another car. So, okay, so that.
That's helpful.
That's a huge question.
But that doesn't show on the diagram.
Yes, that's.
Yeah, it's the, you have to go to the.
One Palmer Avenue.
And again, let me explain a little more about this, this, the uniqueness of, uh, program. Dwight is also in partnership with the Michigan Land Bank. So this is a brand-new type of development program that we've never worked with before, and that's very innovative. The Land Bank is going to acquire the church and then. and then Dwight's investment group will take ownership over and taking off over a period of, what, five years? And, uh, again, we'll be using some brownfield money. Again, we, unfortunately, we have to. We have a very large, to make the economics of this work, we have a very large dilapidated, uh, school building and a newer, but somewhat, but still very dilapidated church attached to it. There's some, definitely a lot of remediation involved. So we would be doing the brownfield. We would be doing the...
The other thing I have.
20, I know that year. But here's the thing. We usually do very good with getting the 20%, because that's usually on the high end in brownfield. Now, we could probably get a little more. We could do 23%, but that might send it out a year or two. So, uh, it's...
I could accept the 20.
It's picture poison.
But the church now is only getting $0.
I could accept the 20. I do, uh, like the architectural...
Yeah, I do too.
That's the actual, true answer.
I really love this.
Yeah.
I don't love the McDonald's french fries. I don't know, spirit colors. I'm not one of them. Uh, it reminds me of what I see in foreland that everybody hates.
We want to be...
Oh, listen. That's what, uh, what was Schwartz and...
Like it's blended with the other communities. It's hard.
That, that, I know, nobody likes that.
It's not on a main road, yeah.
It's kind of, it's kind of a mustard gun and hamburger. You'll never see it.
It reminds me of Southern California, like I see. Not to throw one more wrench in there, but if you can keep as much green space as possible, that would also be great.
Yes, a question.
Great.
Yeah, great.
There isn't any...
Well, you have this, you called us a park-like amenity space. You know?
Oh, I have a question.
If you can...
I can't, I have a...
The question would be, you said five-year plan, right?
No, that's a finance plan within...
How, how long will this take?
That is all, that is all...
In the front, I think that's...
It does not impact our, that...
I understand. How long is the project, it's gonna take? A year?
Uh, probably eighteen months, three, two years.
I get a timeline of how this would facilitate itself.
Well, then we have to consider too the, um, the construction and the traffic and the inconvenience to the neighborhood there as well. For the residents of, so that's always our...
There you go.
Just so you guys understand, there is a sewer, like if it's not a...
Oh, thank you.
It's a real sewer issue.
This is a real road under there.
Right. So we're gonna have to roll back into the brownfield plan too. If you look at this one here, remember, uh, we don't know why the city at that time allowed cavalry Baptist Church to go right over a giant water main.
No, it's a sewer. It's a sanitary sewer. Sanitary sewer, yeah.
So it's right on top of it.
So we would, that would have to be moved because you can't build residential on that.
Well, yeah, it just, well, no. Nobody wants us to rip up a building to fix a sewer.
Right. But since we're ripping up a building, we might as well...
I think we could find an amicable solution that, that damages for everybody.
It's gotta get moved, yeah.
If you think you can come back in a week, or we could send it wherever, all our administration to, and see if we can make arrangements in our schedules to meet with you there.
So...
We are willing to make accommodations to help. So that's the purpose of advancing this.
So, and you were, so you, right now it's a single... I think, so you're ready to split it because you can't have condo and apartments on the same...
We, we understand. We would, we could split that.
It would be a ground, don't you think? Not apartment. We got a multiple apartment.
Well, they would be apartments.
Right, they have to be.
Rental, right, they're new rental units.
And we do need more accessible housing in our community. So 1,300 to 1,700 dollar rent is very accessible for, um, a lot of the people that live in our community. We're hearing people saying in other communities, they're going, you know, $2,000 and up for rent. Um, that's not attainable for people that are, you know, single income or even some double income. Yeah, working, working families. 1,300 to 1,700 is a lot of money, but it also is accessible to people that have an income range that, that look, that looks to move to our community or already live in our community.
Comparatively, it's not anymore. I mean, that, you know, thing that... So maybe if we do this right with the right mix, we can achieve a whole lot of goals with the project. And, like, I agree with Alyssa. There's, I, I like the, like the elevation to be there. I like the fact that there's peace. I like the fact that there's character for this development. And, you know, I think we're just talking about how many are gonna be owner occupied. And I really encourage you guys to ask more questions. Dwight, here, right now, so we can get as much of it out of the way. He owns what type of information?
Do you think 60% owner occupied is viable with your, with the site?
Well, I mean, I, it, it'll come down to the financial protections and demand. Advancing for, um, homeownership.
The marketplace today is pretty high.
Yeah. It's getting, uh, interest rate is going up now and it's gonna be, it's gonna be...
That cap game.
Yeah.
I have a question about square footage because I did not see that anywhere in this plan. Do you have approximate square footage?
Yes, I do.
Full?
These units are... One-bedroom start at 800 and the, um, threes go up to 13.
You have one bedroom?
Yes.
Two-bedroom, one-bedroom flat? Three, you have thirty-two?
We got a lot of dreams.
Two bedrooms are more sustainable.
I think when we have thirty-two of those, two bedrooms are more sustainable. You have less people moving.
Not further, not further.
1,300.
You surprised?
Um, also, my question is, um, do you guys plan to create any, um, any, uh, access to VHA, FHA, um, Section 8 housing events?
So some of that's difficult with condos because condos have more restrictions on...
Right, but since we're doing apartments as well and we're asking for the full, we're getting that...
Difficult with condos. I try to buy what we want.
I don't know.
Are you ask, are you...
I'm asking if you had considered that or if that is something that you would consider because we do, in Oakland County, we, we passed an anti-discrimination ordinance here in Hazel Park that prevents anybody from denying access to those. But we can't, we can't force people to participate in those programs. But we do have, in Oakland County, a rate of approximately 30% of the, um, Section 8 voucher holders are over the age of 65. We do have a growing number of elderly people and seniors in our county as a whole that are eligible for Section 8 but can't find housing that will accept their Section 8 or if there's such a long wait list that they are remaining homeless or whatnot. So I'm wondering if there is any possibility of participation in federal programs for some of the units in this development. Is that something you would consider? I love that. I would give it to you to consider it.
I guess we would consider it. Um, not sure how the vouchers would be applicable.
Well, it'd mostly be for like the rental area, so the apartment portion, I, you know.
Well, I mean, from the standpoint of, of the median criteria of...
They have an income criteria and...
Yeah, they, yeah, they need to...
Pay it and they've got the voucher.
Right.
You're not gonna discriminate.
No.
But that would mean you would have to participate in it. So you would have to sign up for, to accept a certain, a number of vouchers or applicants that are available for that. So that's something I would...
Are you saying, are you asking me to set aside a certain amount of units?
I'm asking if you would consider doing that. If you would consider, we'll be into participating and designating a certain amount of this development to provide housing that does not discriminate.
Okay, yeah, okay.
So we do have, we have veterans that need housing. We have elderly people that need housing. I think housing is a human right. So that's something that I, I'm up here constantly kind of discussing and seeking ways to make it more accessible and attainable for people. Appreciate that.
I think this is, uh, we were all thought out and I think definitely welcome that it's community. And I think if we can further draft the, uh, the owner versus renter, uh, we're gonna really get that forward.
I will remind Council, we've got an investor that has money in this project. On June 30th, it's a advantage of the federal opportunity.
That's why I said we would have a special meeting.
Yeah.
Just so us know how soon you want it.
Yeah, basically, the most important...
If it takes two drafts or three to get this right, we will. Before, two.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, Council. The most important thing to be run, what are your numbers? What's the, what you feel like you can do in terms of the number of owner occupied units? Okay, because if you want some, okay, they think this is...
I think it should be a piece.
It should be further toward the east.
Yeah, I'd like to see the round of views more towards the left.
Right.
So we have that kind of continuity of residential and residential and...
Single-family.
So if I go further, so would you be opposed if I went on the apartments? Okay, well?
If it means going four-story, is that what you're saying?
Three, maybe four.
I thought it was three.
I think we would be...
Positive to the freeway.
I think that we can listen to four-story positive freeway and it makes your number look better. Are you asking for single, you were saying apartments, you're talking single-story apartment. Is that what you're asking?
No, multi, multi-level, four, three, four floors.
Right, you do, if you have...
Because this, I mean, to do housing, you're gonna have to redesign the...
Right, so you're gonna do an elevator and you have to do an elevator at a four, right? And that may be, and if you were to do that, that may make the economics, that may sign, you know, you know, five, six, whatever, uh, apartments.
If you think five...
More likely it's senior citizens.
Right, it's senior citizens who need a elevator and they need no care.
If you think five stories will work better to make the number...
Let's go with four.
Four, I think, I think...
I'm thinking... They're going to...
I'm thinking that we, like, you, like Alyssa said, we have a shortage of VA's housing, Section 8 housing, if we was able to accommodate that on that edge of there, we might as well... Well, you should already prepare to put the five stories in.
Well, let's see what he can come back with.
To maybe to offset the cost of the bigger housing and the space in which it requires. And also maybe some three-bedroom condos to also help with that to make the accommodation better.
Dwight, do, do like A, B, and C maybe. Dwight, make...
Bring us two plans. Bring us two plans.
It would make a nice sound barrier.
And I think of that too. Well, that's, that's, you know, the...
You wouldn't be blocking the sun for it. You'd be blocking the sun on the inside. It'd be on the inside, but you'd have homeowners out there.
At least the tenants in the building have a nice view of the freeway.
Uh...
It's a view. Yeah, beautiful walls.
I'm sorry, they'd be well over there.
We have beautiful walls.
And white, knowing...
Got a nice view. Beautiful.
And it won't block the sun because the sun doesn't...
If we have another flood, we have a stream going down the freeway.
Can I ask one more question also? Um, I know you're probably not at the landscaping portion, but would you consider doing native species planting when you guys get to that level? Um, because it helps with our water runoff. And, um, Tim is not here to speak on that, but, um, we're encouraging that in all our new developments to do some native, and less grass and more like plantable plants because it helps to keep the water in the ground and not the runoff. Um, and then I have one other question. It was, I forgot. I'll think about it, I'm sorry. Oh, um, are these all, in this, in this diagram, are these all single entrance?
Now, the number one, if you go with more units, you still have parking.
And he asked to make those adjustments. You could bring, bring Plan A and Plan B when he gets in Toronto. And he'll propose them to us so he can move forward If he gets it drawn up, and propose them to us, so he can move forward with the development project.
Oh, like, they're gonna say yes to something.
You gotta bring the right, bring the right one.
We look forward to saying yes to something.
If you think there should be three proposals when you come back, then bring three. Bring your full, bring one, and that'll give. Bring, bring one, bring everything you have.
Thank you so much for hearing that.
We're gonna do a lot of variety.
Yeah, you did a great direction.
We're gonna argue on seven stories, right? We're gonna have a special meeting, I mean, everything that happens.
In a wall of apartments.
This is a good thing, though. I think we're all satisfied.
Very excited about it.
I'll have them, have to see how fast the architect can get the design to make.
It'll work its best, I think. Used to do that, but.
You're right, it's not that.
Not that way.
Ah, the people are now in demand for lots of things.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Melissa, do we need to take action?
Uh, I don't think there's any action that we need to take at this point. Uh, we're just gonna, we'll call another meeting, we don't need to table anything, we don't need to do anything. Again, there is a development plan, obviously, includes to that with the brownfield. As soon as we say yes, this is great, and we like this, then we'll go to the brownfield authority to have the plan approved. There may be a height variance that we need from going toward the hills, so we'll go to that committee. I'm just, I'm just doing it for Darlene, in case she had any questions about the process. I'm trying to be more, I am trying to be, convey more information than necessary.
Let's go to the agenda. Boards and commissions.
Nothing to boards and commissions, sir.
New business, see what happens.
Yes, some one of the.
Gloria, I have to introduce the number oh-four dash zero-one to the dash two-two. Um, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but what I will say that. Okay, essentially, what this resolution is going to accomplish is largely two things. One, it takes the position that we have preserved the authority to not pay any more funds for Highland Park's debt. For the GLWA for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, as well as twenty twenty-three or beyond. Um, I know, I know, I'm gonna be helping myself, I know I had this conversation with the administration earlier. There's absolutely no intention to withhold those payments, however, Michigan's system of finance is fundamentally broken. And we, we've got into a position where we have to prioritize payments. It's a hard sell for me, the constituents of the city that we continue subsidizing another community debt. So I hope that we never get to that point. Uh, secondarily, it implores the state of Michigan to do what they should have done a long time ago, and this is mass. Uh, this is something that's not going to be resolved, of course, for several years. Where this escalates into millions upon millions upon millions of dollars, and communities are gonna continue subsidizing this debt. So the state of Michigan needs to grow up and get involved, especially while there is money to allocate for the dressing room. With that, I'm over to you.
I second it.
Any discussion, extension? I have some discussion.
I was going to say, it was over, hey, bet.
I think that, I think that we need to look at the past. Highland Park has a record of poor management, along with rural township and other communities. That are just under state control at one point or another, and they ask all the other communities to help shore up their problems. The city of Michigan taking on the ownership, as was presented by Councilor Longo. That they need to shore up, they need to take on responsibility for the communities that have poor management skills. And they wanna bring in their own financial managers, but their financial managers are just more at best. And they don't seem to do the job they're required to do, nor do they have the oversight in which they need to have, should have. So I want to make that statement, because I feel that we should not support or enable this bad behavior. Next word, discussion.
I just wanted to point out that Hazel Park is not the only city that is putting the bill for Highland Park. And this isn't like a, you know, screw them, find their own gig, but this is the legitimate point of. You cannot expect the surrounding communities to carry the weight of a burden of an entirely separate community. Um, it's one thing if we were like, hey, we can help out right here, but this is going on quite a few years and quite a few thousand dollars. So it's really unacceptable to put that weight on our community, because another community can't handle it. So I do hope the state, that's, and actually does what they're supposed to be doing.
Um, I'd like to echo some of what Lou said. Um, this falls solely on the state. I mean, this has been for a decade, but they allowed this to continue on for a decade. And when you have communities where most of the population is low income, and the state allows something like this to occur. Um, I only place the blame on the state. They are the only ones that can fix this issue.
You have a thought?
If I may, uh, everything that everyone says is completely accurate. Yes, there has been, you know, there's been gross mismanagement in the city of Highland Park multiple times. Sometimes even when the state was in charge, there was gross mismanagement. So, uh, yep, that's a true statement. On the other hand, there's, there's like a serious structural problem in Highland Park, looking at that level. And it goes back, they've also got serious pension problems. And every time there was a pension issue, they didn't make the payment, so they went to court, they got a judgment levy, and they just threw it to the residents and tax rate. They did not impose fiscal discipline at any point in time. Now, really, this is a situation where the state's going to have to intervene. This is a structural problem, a structural deficit. You're not gonna manage your way out of this. There's no, there's no magic, super competent manager that you can bring in unless they can print money. That's gonna be able to manage their way out of it. There's gonna have to be a meaningful state intervention of some type. Either it's gonna be bankruptcy, which the state doesn't want, because then there are credit issues for every city, village, and township in the state of Michigan. Every time that happens. Or else the state's gonna have to come in, restructure some things, and put together a debt repayment schedule that they can actually live with. And probably write off some of that. And probably we was gonna have to do the same thing too, because frankly, let's face it, we're not gonna be able to repurpose the water. So, uh, we're gonna have to take a look at this as a region. Highland Park needs to be a participant, but they need to realize they're not completely masters of their own destiny at this point. And we really need to have the state step in and come up with a solution. And then they need to take a broader look at the entire system of municipal finance, which is, of course, for the nonprofit. So I think we pass a very restrained and appropriate resolution that on one hand says, hey, this has to stop. But we're not, it's not, we're not brandstanding and, you know, because one way or another, they're gonna raise the rates. Okay, so if everybody just, we're not gonna pay it, well, the rates will just sneak up in a different way. So I, I know this game. So you're being very responsible, hopefully someone at the state listens. Hopefully, you know, there'll be some new leadership in the legislature with someone that understands the problem, that will be able to bring some clarity. I mean, you know, no one weena, Mike McCall, but it might, that might be helpful, if someone actually understands it, is up there.
We will go to the municipal heads. Anyone wishing to speak for the department heads? Just FYI out there for the DPW, their concrete program is still going on, tree program. Uh, if you have any questions, feel free to call Tom Jones of the DPW. You can find the number online. City attorney, any comments?
No, thank you.
City manager?
I already talked about the broke, the municipal finance, so I'm talking about how wonderful my department heads are tonight. And, you know, obviously, Jeff Campbell recognizes him for the outstanding work that he's done with light on this project. Hopefully, we can bring this thing in and finally see the resolution of what's gonna derail that building for twenty years or more. And it's taken care of, much needed need of. Tom Jones, he always, whatever problem I need solved in terms of public works, I just call Tom, he said, I'll handle it, and it's done. Uh, Chief Luke Holtz, he does a fantastic job, our crime rates are beginning to be low. He is dedicated to personnel and keeping the city state, he's awesome. Lisa Christensen, you've already heard from her, she's working very hard on the budget. Again, she's, you know, short-staffed in her department, and she's gonna be taking on new responsibilities very soon. As it, I assume, for Mr. James Finckley, who usually would have been behind that. But, you know, we've got some personnel change coming, and he's agreed to undertake some challenges as well. So I'm excited about the future, yes, it's gonna be challenging, but we will persevere. And again, I just wanna thank all of them for the outstanding job.
Thank you. Not to the hero?
Thank you, Mr. McCall. I'm thanking everybody for coming out with us, and especially Darlene for giving us the opportunity to borrow people with municipal finance. It's something we've had to deal with from the beginning, and it's not something we talk about every day, or every week except that, but.
If you can see, I can talk about it a lot.
We're painfully aware of it. It ties our hands for the things we'd really like to do with us. Thank you, though, for the questions and participation. Watch out for the bicyclists, it's nice weather, I put in twenty, about thirty miles over the weekend. And it's sunny, great. And there's the Hazel Park Bike Club, they haven't officially started yet, but they do meet Wednesdays behind the high school at seven o'clock. When they do start the official ride. It's trash day too, tomorrow, in my neighborhood. And just a reminder, the trash bins, the recycle bins, don't belong in the street, they belong on the curdle edge, I think that's the word. Is that things, curdle edge? Was the word, the grass between the sidewalk and the street now, the curdle edge, I had to look that up. Um, but anyway, that's where the garbage containers belong, because the street super can't sweep the street when the garbage can't go in the street. Anyway, if you love somebody, tell them, and if you have children, hug them every day, tell them you love them. Thanks for coming out.
That's a lot. Uh, I'd like to recognize that the audience at this meeting is distinctly different than the last meeting. And I just, pretty common frustration that I think a lot of us feel as we try to be as active as possible. While there was absolutely no affiliation with the city, but a core board that was really become the marketplace of ideas when it comes to city council members and other interacting with the public. I respond to every constituent email, phone call, and I know I'm not alone, and I know all of you do the same as well, but. Um, and yes, Darlene, thank you for being here, I guess I'd just like to express a slight amount of frustration at the lack of involvement of the public. Uh, so to those of you in Facebook land, I would love to encourage you to come to our next meeting and all our budget sessions, because those decisions that are made there impact your lives more greatly than in marijuana music festival or any other thing that we do over the course of the year. The budget is more than just a budget, it's really an expression of a city's ideals and what we prioritize. So I implore everybody who wants to be involved in the process, you too. Additionally, I want to share that everybody's gonna be getting new voter cards in the mail, there's nothing sketchy, there's nothing nefarious. It was required by the law, and you now live in different house and senate and congressional districts, and we are required to send those to you. Um, so if I get one email related to election fraud, I'm going to be really, really sad about that. Uh, that's all I got. That's the first discussion.
Thank you. Um, to tag on to his new voter card, um, none of our voting precincts have changed, so your current voting precinct will remain the same, so don't panic about that. This has just been updated, um, just like you update your, you have to get a new driver's license every so often, the secretary of state, same thing with your voter card. Um, so don't panic, those aren't, they changes, just get a new refreshed, pretty one through spring. Um, I also want to thank Darlene for coming out, and I do look forward to having more of these fun discussions about taxes and finance, because I love numbers. And I love to tell people about the numbers, and you can just scroll through all of the commentary that I've made and the answers that I've tried to give to people about where the funding is going, how the funding gets there, where it comes from, and what we are responsible for providing. And the city budget runs just like any other budget, where there are priorities, and those priorities have to be paid. Um, the state constitution requires specific payments to specific priorities also. So in addition to not just the needs of the community and the needs of the city to run functionally, there are requirements by the state that have us putting money towards a very specific cost in our budgeting, and that's required by the constitution. So we all love the constitution, and we all know that it is an, it is a precedent and document, so it can't be, you know, we don't have to back. Um, but I also want to already echo, watch out for pedestrians, watch out for bike riders. Um, as a dog walker, I cannot tell you how often people don't stop for crosswalks. Um, don't pay attention to people standing at crosswalks, just please pay attention to your surroundings when you're driving. And also, I too wanted to thank our departments for coming out when we had our incident this week on John R. that took out some power lines unexpectedly, because we had some low-hanging lines. Um, nicely to find out that it was like a one-off incident, this wasn't an issue with an oversized vehicle traveling where it wasn't supposed to. Um, so this was an unfortunate incident, but hopefully it went off, and literally just an accident that was, um, nobody was injured in, and our city quickly addressed, and our first responders got out there and kept everybody safe. And he got that power restored quickly too, so grateful for that, and grateful for the, uh, the information from our community and the investigation, that it was, you know, primarily just an accident. So I bet everybody survived that, and glad that it was nice weather when it happened also. That would've been no fun in January or February.
Not if I may, you're right, police fire, DPW, everybody forgets DPW are also, when most things happen, they're also perfect fine. So all three departments did.
And our MCSU.
And MCSU, Steve Stewart was out there as well, too. So they did, they did a great job, and a very great thing. DTP actually showed up, they brought a ton of people, and they had that thing fixed very quickly for the amount of damage that there.
How many, how many posts did it take down, six?
Multiple posts, do we know?
Three buzzles, three lights.
Three buzzles, three lights, yeah. So thank you, guys, and everybody, thank you.
April Tim McCall and State Representative.
I also would like to thank you, Darlene, for coming, I know we spoke the other day, uh, so I always appreciate when residents ask questions and ask actually difficult questions, because those are complicated questions, you know, around issues. Um, and a lot of people don't ask about, they just make assumptions, and I'll see that all over Facebook, so, you know. So thank you for coming out and answering.
Thank you for the coffee, darling.
You're welcome. Um, I just, I'd like to go back to the resolution, having to do Highland Park and the water. Water, much like Alyssa said, about housing, if you can write water is also being right. Um, so when situations like this are allowed to go on for a decade without the state doing anything, the state, who often is in our way as well. I shouldn't say often, they all, totally are, you know.
Number one threat to the city of Hazel Park is the state of the nation.
Yeah, so, so all of this fully rests on them, you know, it shouldn't rest on any small municipality like us, or any other community. And, but the primary reason we pass ordinances like this is so that the state will take notice. They won't listen to just Hazel Park, but when there's a whole bunch of communities talking about it, then they listen. You know how politicians are, so, uh, thank you, that's all I have to say, my.
Thank you. It was exhilarating to have that conversation, by the way. It was really fun to have someone question us on some of the criterias in which we have to pay hours of boring reading sometimes to find out the numbers in which we sometimes have to ask questions about, because we don't understand where things are allocated and go. Uh, we, over the years, Andy and I have finally figured out a system to figure out how the budgets rotate and how they fluctuate and play. Our, our budget is mainly what we set, is what the city, city manager and staff and staff allocate. A lot of that is fixed costs.
Yeah.
Majority of it. And everybody thinks all we have is an open checkbook to fix things, we have to pay those fixed costs and then make a difference up in other areas if we can. And then it doesn't include the emergency statuses, such as a road collapse, or, you know, we have a certain amount allocated for sewer repair in our water budget. You know, there's different things that we have set up in service situations. And it, and it makes a big difference in how it, you know, we let set up much as long.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. Again, we're back to the point where there's not a lot of wiggle room, Lacy and I were talking just before the meeting started, and, you know, we're bringing you a budget, there's, it is what it is.
It can't be no worse than two thousand ten.
We're not, we're not in a situation where we're in trouble, there's not a lot of.
It's always done. Our city's always the edge of having a very tight, conformal budget. That's why we have to watch how the actuary come in every year, because it can sink or break us one way or another, that's how tight our budget is. And Lacy sits back there and thinks, I didn't know they do that. He's either a face.
Yeah, we do pay.
Well, we do pay it, and thank you for a great job. And I'd like to also bring up, we are having a parade and a fair this year, so we wanted everyone to participate as much as is possible, because it's around the corner. Believe it or not, you most know flu last week, and we had eighty degrees this weekend, it is Michigan. By Memorial Weekend, we'll be sweating to death at ninety-degree temperatures, hopefully. And we'll be tossing candy, hopefully down John R. once a year.
You ready, Ken? Memorial Day. Yeah, we did, instead of a parade last year, we did Memorial, that's right, I love that.
It's cool to have a group. It's cool to have groups of kids or whatever in the parade.
We always, we always do that, we always do that.
We always do that.
They've been doing it for years.
We didn't do the actual parade, so it'd be more of a parade.
Well, we're.
I wanna ride my bike, is what I'm saying, I wanna ride my bike, the parade. It's still decorated from last year.
We'll build a boat and put John on it. Anyways.
You know what, I'm glad you brought that up, we're gonna have, we are going to probably have, this is what you guys approve from the recreation board, a shorter parade route this year, and hopefully that will help us attract more people. We have heard for so many years that our parade route was too long, so we're gonna be starting from junior high, and this will help us in terms of the amount of streets that we have to block off too with, you know, limited personnel. So we go from junior high up John R. to Wilbert Heights, turn left, and proceed to Green Avenue. So if we wanna have a great parade, people in the community need to participate in the parade. You're part of a civic group, or you, you know, marching the parade. If you're a part of a neighborhood watch group, marching the parade, you know, if you have kids that are in dance club or wrestling club, or some other community organization or school group, march in the parade.
Or have a little float, make something up.
Floats would be great.
If we don't have enough active floats in that parade, it would be nice to have one. I didn't want to go that far. So, but that being said, I think that we've had a very fruitful discussion here, and hopefully the gentleman comes back with some very nice proposals to find the avenue in which we can be better to create new development of housing in that five-eight parcel. I think it would be something for the future of our town to see. And I think it would be moving us even more forward than where we've been in the last few years with the development of national capitals, or the old racetracks, as you said, with all the new development there and all the new jobs that we've created. And of course, the marijuana industry has created a lot of jobs in this city, and it cleaned up some of the older buildings that were just sudden vacant, that were not being used, or just being used for storage or whatever. It's made a better way to modernize some of those buildings, and it's made it, I think, a little more advantageous for our community to grow. And that, that, I think, that's what will have in the future even more. Our community's grown so much in the last five years, it's unbelievable. And I think that we can see.
Besides the census. Yeah.
Besides, besides the stupid census takers that didn't do their job. Unfortunately, COVID.
What census data?
Unfortunately, COVID did not help that whole situation. But I'd like to motion to adjourn, thank you. Motion to adjourn.